That was properly noticed, I guess, two days ago on the town website. I believe we're ready to, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, take seats. Rich, would you like to do the roll call, please?
For Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Stan Englund.
Here.
Mark Jinsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Maria Doughton.
Here.
Christina Ross. Rich Townsend.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have 10 of 12, you have a quorum.
Great. I'm going to try and see if I have a timer. Stopwatch. Okay, great, so we have, the meeting is called to order. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. We're not voting on anything, we're only reviewing one thing, we're talking about the library, so I ask that speakers are requested to provide name and street address and comments be limited to the library and limit them to two minutes, please, and I'll, I have a timer. So is there anybody who would like to speak on the library for two minutes? By the way, before you begin, let me mention that I spoke to members of the library board today and they said, is a presentation required? There will be no presentations and I was not anticipating anybody talking tonight except for the Town Council. That being said, I always invite the public to speak, but I asked the library not to prepare a presentation, and when members of the public called me today and said, is this the big meeting? I said, this is not the big meeting where we make decisions, this is just a conversation between Town Council members on the subject of the library because we haven't gotten to speak about it with each other for a couple months, a lot's changed, and I thought it was going to be important for us to talk about how we feel about the library project and the latest changes to the MOU, which the members have not seen yet. So with that backdrop in mind, does anybody want to raise their hand and speak to the Boy, did I really throw so much cold water on the public that nobody wants to say anything? Okay, good. All right, so then with that, I guess I'd like to begin by saying, yes?
Hi, it's Susan Servin, and I'd just like to speak quickly, I'm at 196 Marionne Road, and just regarding, just regarding the library, you know, some of us have formed a group just to help raise awareness that the 1913 building is supposedly, you know, going to be taken down, and at this challenging time and in the interest of full transparency, especially in light of COVID and the large $10 million request from the town, which would have to be bonded, if we could see a plan in any pro forma forecasts or pro forma statements or forecasts which have been compiled in order to determine the impact on our taxes and mill rate going forward, it would be appreciated.
Okay, duly noted, impact on our tax rates, important. Thank you, Susan. I see that there's a Kimberly, would Kimberly like to address the council?
Sure. Hi, everyone, thanks for being here tonight. I just want to talk a little bit about our view.
You cut out.
...going forward.
I need your full name and your street address.
Sure. My last name is Norton, my street address is 17 Green Avenue.
Great, thank you, go ahead.
First of all, I want to start by saying I fully support the Governor's executive order to delay votes on capital projects with COVID-19, e-learning, e-borrowing at the library, kids without camp options or limited camp options, unfortunately civil unrest in our country right now, and now the news that Mike Handler is not going to be leading our emergency response. I think it's a very uncertain time for people, especially people with children and elderly people, which I fall into both, or elderly relatives, I fall into both of those categories, with an 83-year-old dad and four children, who all go to the New Canaan Public Schools, oh, except for one who's in college, Georgetown. So in light of all that, I'd like to just talk about the fact that our group is expanding far beyond what has been termed preservationists. We have regular citizens that have not been involved in the preservation movement joining our efforts to try to keep the 1913 library. We also have some prominent preservationists that have also joined our group, Simeon Bancop, Executive Director of the Historic Districts Council from New York City, and Dr. Laura Chmeliski, who is an expert on town greens and the significance of town greens in our history, which is very different from what's being proposed in terms of the town green that would take the place of 1913. So I want to briefly go over a letter that we wrote that had 22 supporters and is growing, people keep emailing me, asking me to sign the letter every day, once they had seen it go up on the New Canaan night, New Canaan advertiser in the patch, and I'm just going to briefly go into it, I'm not going to go into all of the details, but I'm going to reiterate, if you've read it, I apologize. Top 10 reasons to keep our 1913 library. It's a landmark building, the 1913 library number two, sorry, number two, it's structurally sound and in very good condition, according to the Friends of Our Library Building Report, which can be found online. It's better for the environment, and you can look at what it says in the letter, but basically, we're all worried about climate change and the environment, and it's much better to reuse a building than it is to take it down. Number four, the library, keeping it would be more inclusive of our community from a socioeconomic point of view, geographical point of view, based on where people live in town and the potential hardships to their property if they live near a very large structure, with some issues with parking, as well as generational diversity. There's a lot of people that are preservationists that remember a lot more about the library than I do, and I really respect all of their opinions, and I think it's so important, as we're looking for senior housing and helping seniors, that we respect their opinion, that they really care about this library. Number five, New Canaan can join other Connecticut towns in recognizing and honoring our built heritage, such as Ridgefield saved their old library, Wilton expanded upon their original design, and the Ferguson Library in downtown Stanford added a modern building and kept their original landmark building. So rather than citing a place like Darien or Greenwich, and I've been to both of those libraries, I have to say, the other libraries, the other towns, Ridgefield, Stanford, and Wilton, are libraries that we'd like to look up to as well, even though they're not our rivals in the football, Turkey Bowl. Number six, it's good for the economy, and there's been some studies out that have looked at lots of, 15 years of dozens of studies that look at that it's good for the economy, jobs, property values, heritage tourism, environmental impacts, social impact, and downtime revitalization. So a lot of the things that I've heard about new proposals say all of those things, but we have the same effect by keeping the old library, the same effect of bringing people to town, of bringing jobs into town, raising property values. In fact, I would argue that we have an even better position because we do have a unique structure that is, been in our town for over 100 years. Number seven, it's time to be fiscally prudent, especially in light of COVID-19. I want to make sure that all of our first responders and everyone has everything they need, from bathrooms at the police department that need to work properly, to first responders and EMTs that have all of the PPE that they need, and that the children who now have to go through e-learning, what's going to happen in the fall? Are we going to need to do special shifts? Are the teachers' contracts going to need to be renegotiated? Because teachers now have to work from, say, 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 PM at night because only five kids can go to school. I'm almost done, thank you for your patience. Number eight, issues with flooding will not be resolved with the new library building. Number nine, moving the library is not the answer, we want it to stay in its original location. And lastly, number 10, saving it can be done, Ridgefield, Stanford, and Wilton did it. And again, like I said, this has been signed by over 22 people, and that's it, thank you for listening.
Thank you. You bring up many good points, and I know there's a lot of people out there who share your feelings, and this is not, this is not the end of that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. But tonight, I want to basically focus our energies on the memorandum of understanding. I sent an email out, we'll let me back up. The memorandum of understanding between the town and the library board is being negotiated by the First Selectman. The First Selectman has asked a couple members of the Board of Finance and a couple members of the Board of the Town Council to advise him on what's important to us in that memorandum. That's really the purpose of this conversation. I wanted to get input from Town Council members on that memorandum because one of the things I told you was that we would not see it for a couple months, that turns out not to be true. Kevin, in the last few days, has said that we may see it in our June meeting, in its final form, in its final recommended form, and if not, in the July meeting. And that's basically why Rich and I thought it would be a good idea to convene this meeting and get your thoughts on what's important in that memorandum and how you feel about the project generally. Rich, did I miss anything?
No, no, I think that's exactly what we wanted to get done.
With that being said, I sent a note saying, and I'll just read it, I sent a note last week, last Thursday, saying, one question is timing, there's a good chance that the Town Council will see this on our July agenda. Well, that's changed to June. I believe that the timing is that Kevin is hoping to complete the memorandum that we can see and send it to the Board of Finance for next week's meeting, and it'll come to us if the Board of Finance approves it the following week at our meeting. The second question is library board representation, and I mentioned to you that we've asked for library board representation. At least one of you has said it should be commensurate with our financial investment, so we need to talk about that because we can't argue about that kind of thing over email. So let's talk about representation, it would be our second item today. The third item is of design changes. I believe that what Kim just addressed all falls under design changes, the question of a town green, the question of the old library, the question of parking, the, all questions related to the design of this building, we need to talk about that, but as a group, I believe that most of those are being handled by planning and zoning, so we have to talk about that. And then the fourth item would be the level and timing of the town's financial commitment. That's probably the toughest section of the MOU, and I think we have to give some input to Kevin. So with that said, does anybody else have a few ideas or want to start with the question of timing? Kevin, you're here, I won't require you to say anything, but if you want, if you want to address us on timing and why the Governor's change and your thoughts on referendum have caused this timing, that would be appreciated.
Okay, so John, thank you. You know, we've been working on the MOU for two months, and we keep on learning what the Governors, we didn't think it wise to try to bring this during a period where the emergency dictates that there can't be an opportunity for referendum. I was on a Governor's Call this afternoon at 5:00, where they indicate that the budget provisions expire at the end of June, because a lot of towns can't have a referendum on their budget, which implies that perhaps after June 30th, the referendum thing goes away. Secondly, we've been told last week that this new guidance on mail-in voting could be a way of having a referendum if you were under the Governor's restrictions on referendums. So it's not clear yet exactly where we are on the ability to have a referendum, but that was forcing us to look at a July or August timeframe to have an appropriation and bond resolution brought forward. We always anticipated the MOU would be coming as soon as we can get it done, if we can get it done for next week, we will, if not, we'll be into July.
So the referendum, in the chat, and it's helpful if you have your questions that we may be able to address, put them in the chat room, what does that mean, referendum of what kind? I think what is being referred to is that if we're going to make a major town expenditure and citizens want to gather the necessary signatures, and I believe it's around 700, that referendum in order to challenge such an expenditure, that process has to be completed 45 days before an election, is that correct?
Well, there's a statute that says the election machinery shuts down 45 days before the November 3rd election, so we can't have a referendum in the 45 days if we're in that window, but the, so when we approve, when the Town Council approves a bond resolution and appropriation, that triggers in a charter mandated schedule of when people can ask for referendum, and if they get the petition signed by the required number of people, we then have a period of time which has to be under the charter, a referendum must be conducted. So that creates a window effect where we either have to, we thought we could do August, but we don't think we can do August now, which pushes it back to July, which makes us, puts more pressure on us to get the MOU agreed to in June and then do the bond resolution in July. You don't have a scheduled meeting in August anyway, but the point is, we have this dynamic of the Governor's orders in an emergency, which is a lot of unclarity about what exactly we can do by way of having a referendum, and the statutory block at the end of the year where we can't, can't have a referendum beyond 45 days before November 3rd.
Could we just be clear on what is the issue that may or may not go to referendum? Is it the adoption of the MOU or the later author's bond authorization? What's the event that we're?
Any appropriation or any bond resolution is subject to referendum. The MOU, the MOU is not subject to referendum.
The money.
The MOU is just an agreement between the town and the library as to what we plan to do in connection with constructing a library.
So it'll be contingent on bond authorization?
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So this issue right now isn't urgent for us to figure this out right now, because the earliest you're going to have a bond resolution is August?
July.
July, oh, July.
No, I would consider, I would characterize it as rather urgent. If the Board of Finance takes up and approves a $10 million expenditure in the MOU next week and it comes before us, we need to be ready to make a decision on that MOU. And then once the MOU has been signed off by Board of Finance and Town Council, then the whole bond process machine starts going, and that has to be completed. We need to give the public time to challenge this if they don't like it. I know at least one person, and he's in this meeting, has said, I want to know what is the process, and that's a very important reason why we're convening here, we do have a process where the public can challenge this and do so at least 45 days before the election, so that's.
Can we be, can we be clear, John, that we're not, the MOU is between Kevin and the library?
No, 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 the MOU is between the town and the library, it's my job.
You're constructing it, though.
It's my job as First Selectman to negotiate an agreement and bring it to the Board of Finance, and then the Board of Finance will recommend the MOU to the Town Council.
Can I, can I just comment on this? I mean, the reason that we're trying to get everybody together to talk about it, it's only fair to give Kevin, as he puts the MOU together, what the, what the main feeling is of the Town Council on what ought to be in it that may not be in it, or the things in it that they don't want, that we wouldn't want, why waste, why waste time holding our opinions to the weight of?
Well, but to stand the referendum question for a minute, it seems to me that whatever happens in Hartford, that we have a public policy issue regarding the safety of elections, and I think that we should decide before, before, if John wants to know that the skids are greased, we should be talking about, are we ready as a town to feel comfortable bringing people to it either in, you know, in-person referendum vote, or whether we have the machinery for, you know, online or mail-in ballot? I mean, you know, I wouldn't want to give a green light to the concept unless I know what, what process it is we're embracing and do we feel like it's, you know, it protects the health of our citizens.
That, and we'll have that conversation, but you, we're going to go into this conversation and next week's meeting, assuming that the Governor is talking about, and Kevin is talking about, either in-person or mail-in balloting, that they're giving us a mechanism to challenge it. We have to make the assumption that some safe mechanism is in place for you to make your vote.
Good.
Yeah, and John, just to be clear, we thought until more recently that the Governor's order about not having a referendum on major items would apply until September 9th, that is not the case, so, but we do feel that this, this large expenditure should be subject to referendum.
Agreed.
When will we be able to see the MOU, at the earliest?
When it comes to the Board of Finance next Tuesday, if it comes to the Board of Finance next Tuesday. We'd like to get it done. Keep, you know, the reason, you know, what we normally do is the leaders of the town, I asked.
I didn't hear that.
To members of the Board of Finance, to John, to represent memberships, and then we'll bring it, a draft MOU, and you can decide if it meets your needs.
Some of that got cut off, Kevin.
This is Penny, may I make a comment? This is only, the timing of this is only predicated on your wish or the wish to have the ballot, this November's ballot accommodate the referendum issue. If it does not go on this November's ballot.
No, no, there's no way we get it on the November ballot, our charter and the state statute conflict. So we can't possibly get it on the November 3rd ballot. We're going to have to try to do it before, there's a window. We're trying to, we're trying to authorize our library project and give the citizens the right to a referendum. The Governor's orders have made that difficult because we thought that we would be under, you know, the Governor keeps issuing new guidance, this mail-in voting thing only was issued a week ago, and that was viewed as something that could give us a referendum by mail-in voting. And, but keep in mind, there's also, there's another process that has to begin, the planning and zoning process will begin in June, July, and that's going to take a few months. So the library's on that track, library would just like to have, you know, they have a plan to meet their donors' objective to get a construction project going by early 2021. If we have to wait till after the November 3rd election to bring a bond resolution and then have a referendum in early 21, we'll do that, but, you know, we, right now, we're trying to work within the Governor's orders, which are very conflicting and changing, and also a statutory window that locks down the state election process from 45 days before November 3rd. We cannot hold a referendum in that window of 45 days.
So we're just trying to be sure that we have a process in place if, if the appropriation is approved or the bond resolution approved, and if it goes to referendum, and we won't assume that it would, we just have to be ready for that.
Yeah, I think everyone agrees, we don't want to try to adopt a $10 million project without the right to referendum.
Do we have the ability for the citizenry to obtain the requisite signatures, given the stay-at-home mandates?
Well, I think the thinking is that by July and August, the stay-at-home mandate will largely be relaxed.
Well, citizens are supposed to stay home. You keep reminding me, Kevin.
That doesn't mean people can't go door-to-door, but the, again, this is what we're dealing with, this, this, this emergency and the Governor's orders have created obstacles that prevent you from doing what you normally would do, and therefore we have to, we have to work, now, maybe if we, if the process gets off track, the planning zoning process will go forward this summer, and then we will do a bond resolution and appropriation after November 3rd and have a referendum early in 21, if, if, if we have to. So we have a window, and we have the opportunity to try to meet the window, and if we can't, we'll just move on to the next, the next schedule.
I think, Kevin, it will be important that when the MOU is complete, that we attach to it an appendix, a sheet with the key dates, that the Governor and our own state, the state statute and our charter, so that it's clear to everybody who's reading this MOU what would be the path for challenge that we know at this time, and the dates for any potential challenge, so that people understand, including the library board members, Board of Finance members, Town Council members, and the public, because it's a moving target, as you pointed out, new guidance from the Governor all the time. So we should add, add those dates to the MOU. And you bring up a good point, Penny, door-to-door at this time is not allowed, but what's going to be allowed in a month when the bond is taken up is a different question, so we're not, we're not quite sure. Any other questions on timing?
John, John, just a second, the way I look at this is, we're basically trying to help and serve everybody's interests, right? We're trying to get the library to stay on track, we're trying to keep planning and zoning on track, we're trying to keep, you know, the Selectman's Office on track and allow people to put a referendum forward, so we're trying to just check all the boxes here and make sure that everybody has a say and a place at the table, that's really what we're trying to do.
Right.
And, and, you know, if we're able to do all that without, with social distancing going on, it's amazing, so hopefully we can go door-to-door, Penny, that's, that's really the only, the only way the seniors are really going to be able to weigh in on this.
And I would like to make sure that we have enough time for the folks at the 1913 library, right, to put together a proposal for how they would save that building and maintain it with their own funds.
Okay.
I think there are a lot of questions that perhaps the public has in their minds, do they fully understand what, what is comprising the, the request? I for one would like to have much more specific information before I can vote on funding I mean, we've had one, actually, was it really a formal presentation from the library or just an information? It was, it was an information session, if I remember correctly, wasn't really a, this is a proposal. I've asked for background information from commentary that the library's given in the past and have yet to receive it.
Penny, Penny, but you also, you always have that presentation in it as part of an appropriation and bonding resolution, that's one of, that was, that was a prior presentation, but when you, when you start getting to the point of actually authorizing it with appropriation, that's when you have your presentation, so we'll do that in July, we'll do that in August, we'll do it in October, September, but if we do it in September, we're into a, you know, an approval after November 3rd, so there's lots of possibilities here. We know that the planning zoning process will probably take two or three meetings at least, so.
I understand that, Kevin, but I think the public needs to have very specific information and what we're voting on.
Yeah, I'd agree with Penny, you know, I think it would be nice, you know, that we have, you know, formal quotes, you know, with at least a week to review them before we vote on this, you know, we want to know that, you know, what we're voting on is, you know, the money that we're putting in is going to be for a final and fit it out, you know, it's got to have furniture, appliances, IT, landscaping, you know, all that stuff, so we really need to know, what do we really think the final cost is, you know, contingencies, you know, all in, where are we standing?
I think as a, okay, so let's just, let's just get back to our agenda, so if we're... I think as a, okay, so, let's just, let's just get back to our agenda. So, if we're, if we're okay with timing, now we need to move to, I think, the question of representation. And it's perhaps the, getting to the heart of what you're talking about, Penny, and you're talking about Sven. Is it practical, okay, once we, for the town council, all 12 members of the town council, and all nine members of the Board of Finance, to weigh in on details at that level? It's why we're asking for representation for the town council and for the Board of Finance on either or both, the library board or the library building committee. And that, and it's the job of our representatives, and they can be council members, or they can be by proxy, you know, people we designate, but it's their job to ask those questions about, did you, did you think of the furniture, and did you think of the heating bill, and did you think of? That's not something we can do, as a matter of course, in the town council during our regular meetings. So-
I disagree.
-what level of representation are we comfortable with would allow the library to move forward and for us to, to not be surprised, and the public to not be surprised at the end of the process? And I'll just, and I'll just, you know, and I want to use an anecdote, because I brought it up in a meeting last week with Kevin. I said, you know, the fields process, I don't feel like, with the turf fields, the town council didn't put somebody there every step of the, of the way, reporting back to us on, on the risks and, and, and the money. So, we're going to make sure that we identify somebody, and we take that responsibility, that we are informed every step of the way on the costs, you know, and expectations of this. Go ahead.
John, I, I would just add that I think the town council needs representation on the board of the library and on the building committee.
Why?
Because I think a lot of the questions that Sven raises and Penny are going to come from the building committee, not from the board level. So, you know, it would be, it would be nice for the town council to have representation along the way through their process.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I'm going to push back and just play devil's advocate for a moment. If, if, so, the building committee is taking on the risk of building the building on time and on budget, and the library board is going to concern itself with the long-term operations. So, you want us to have, but, and, and some would argue that we already have an interest in the library's long-term operations, because we are the final approval of their budget every year. If they ask for a 10 increase, and we know, and we flag that early and often enough that we're not going to pay for a 10% increase, then we already have the control we need without having board seats.
So, then I guess my question is, what, why would we then have, or what's the thought behind having two Board of Finance members on the building committee and two town council on the, at the, at the board level? Just, you know, what was the overall thought process there, since, since the, most of us weren't, you know, aren't part of these conversations?
I, I'm not sure how it got that way, but that's what we're talking about now. Where should it be? So, for everybody who's, who's tuning in now for the first time, we've been talking about two seats on the building committee and two seats on the library board, and that may not be the best idea. And at least one proposal has had Board of Finance members on the building committee and town council on the library board. But, I need, that's one of the reasons, major reasons for this meeting. I need, I need feedback on where you think the representation should come from and how much is enough.
John, can I, can I address that for a second? Because I think the representation on the Board of Trustees has a different life to it than that of the building committee. The building committee will, will exist while the building's being built until it's done. I think that the town council, and I think perhaps the Board of, the Board of Finance, should have representation on the Board of Trustees, given the amount of support the town is providing every year, and I think that should be on an ongoing basis. I mean, that may or may not be in this MOU, but if it's not in this MOU, it ought to be in an agreement between the town. In my mind, it ought to be in an agreement between the town, the Board, the town council and the library on an ongoing basis. The way the Board of Finance is, is satisfied today is, is they have two people that are considered liaisons that do that. They don't, they, and what I'm told is they have the ability to go to the board meetings, which is where the information really gets passed. So, if you want to view the way I think the library would, would think it's going today is, there's liaisons from the Board of Finance. There, there may be liaisons from the, from the town council. I mean, that may be under the, the finance subcommittee, but we have not exercised that, and we haven't exercised it in terms of people going to the, going to the board meetings and actually transmitting information back. Today, today, the, Kevin is an ex officio member of the board, and then there's, there's nobody from the Board of Finance. We do, you know, the, the, that's how we got to where, where we are today. So, the Board of Finance is satisfied with their liaison relationship and with having two people on the, on the, the building committee. My recommendation is, is two people on, on the trustees, at least on an ongoing basis, for the town council. And I, I personally am okay if the Board of Finance represents us and, and the building committee. But, that may not be where everybody else is. Everybody else may think we need two people on that as well, or we should have two people on that. So, that's an open question.
I'd like to keep-
Subcommittee on, on finance and government. Richard, you're on it. Mark, you're on it. Robin, Maria, Christina, and myself are on the lottery representation from the council.
That's, that's true, Penny, but we don't have an input to the board meetings.
I just want to be sure we don't, we don't miss a step that comes before these, these committee assignments. Before we approve the $10 million, if it's $10 million, it seems to me that, that we're going to want to have a, a fair amount of disclosure and knowledge, to Sven's point, about, you know, what, what's the scope of the project that we're contributing to? And you lose a lot of leverage after you approve the appropriation on that point. So, I think the question is, how much are we going to know? And I think Christina's done a lot of thinking about this, about, about what, what the scope of the project is. I, I don't know, I'm not an expert, I can't say how specific that needs to get, but we just haven't talked about that very much.
If, if I may, this is Christina. I'd just like to say that a few of the recommendations that I presented to Kevin and to John regarding what I would like to see on the MOU.
I know. Probably because everybody's streaming.
I can't hear her.
Yeah, I can't hear her.
Can't hear you, Christina.
Oh, gee.
She's buffering.
We'll come back to you. Anyone else?
I'll put in my two cents and say that I think town council needs to have a representative, you know, present at the building committee meetings. You know, the, you know, the fields and the lighting stuff is just, it's still raw for me. I just don't want to do that again.
John, I'll, I'll agree with Mark and Sven on this. I, I really think that the amount of money that we're talking about spending on this project is, is, is large, right? I mean, it's $30 million. And when we do a building project, whether it's the high school or whether it's Saks, all of the big projects we've done over the years, we have had town representation on those building committees. And I think that having a council member on, one or two on the building committee is a huge, huge plus. It's also a big commitment. It's, it's at least three years to be on that committee. And in the past, I know Ken Campbell served on the high school committee and on Saks. Having him report back to us, meeting after meeting after meeting, as far as what was going on, was a very important part of what those committees represented. And it was great having those reports, you know, he almost reported almost every meeting during the height of the project. So, I, I would support, greatly support having one or two members on the building committee. As for the, as for the trustee side of it, I've served on the library board myself for years. It's a large commitment. I mean, to have one of, one of our council members, or two of our council members on there, and expect them to go to every meeting, especially during times where we're up to our eyeballs, like budget season, and there's, there's times during the year where we are meeting, you know, we could meet two, three times a week. I mean, that's, it, it would be a lot to expect. A full-fledged participating board member, it's one thing to have a name on a board, but when I'm on a board, and I'm sure most of you, when you're on a board, you want to participate and be part of it. You don't just want your name on the letterhead. So, being a board member on a library board is, is, would be a large commitment, I think. Whether, you know, I think the liaisons that we've had have been valuable. Whether we should be requiring the liaisons to attend the meetings during, you know, during times when they can, that's another, that's a whole nother process, where we're asking folks to actually go to these meetings. And that's, that's something we could do. But, you know, everybody knows how many meetings we already have. So, that's my only, that's my only issue with it, is, is adding that to somebody's plate would be fairly a, a big ask.
So, are you okay with two ex officio, two, two members of the town council, ex officio on the library board, where, who are, therefore have a right to go to all the meetings, but basically are focusing their energies on the, the library's meetings during budget season, and the budget portions of their meetings? And basically, as, as, I think it was Tom, or maybe it was Sven, who said, we would cede, or we would ask the Board of Finance members to manage the, the building committee representation. Are you saying you want to be on the building committee? You want TC representation directly on the building committee?
Yes, I do. I, I think that TC should have representation on the building committee. And, you know, if, if it means having another, having us as ex officio on the board to satisfy that as well, I'm, I'm open to that. I know the first electman's always been ex officio on the board. Kevin, I'm sure has been to many board meetings for the library over the years. And, you know, I know in the past, when I was on the board, once in a while, the first electman would attend a meeting, or call in and have that connection. But, you know, going to those board meetings, as you would imagine, there's a lot of minutia they get into, and that we really don't need to sit through, you know. It's almost like, you know, when you attend a Board, Board of Ed meeting, where, you know, there's a lot of small items that you're looking at. And it's like somebody being a member of our meetings, where you get into stuff that you say, wow, what, why, why are we going into the weeds on this?
Are you suggesting one member each of the Board of Finance and Town Council on the library board, ex officio, and on the building committee with voting privileges on the building committee? Yes? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, at a minimum.
At a minimum. Okay. Any comments on that, councilman?
Like to see two and two.
Yeah, I mean, John, 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 for, for party representation, you know, I think it's fair to have two and two. And that's really what you should be doing, because it's, it's difficult, given our structure, to set it up any other way.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
John, would, if we had two and two, would they be the same two people on the building committee and on the board, or are we talking a total of four town councilmen?
We could, we could. I'm, I'm here to listen to what you think is enough. Let me-
Given, given those, John, given the subcommittee structure, you know, we, this is something we'd be setting up on, as far as the board structure goes, for, for the future, right? Ongoing for, for as long as we, the council's around. So, it would make sense that two people, if they're serving on that subcommittee, the, two of those people would be the actual, you know, people that are ex officio on the board. It would only make sense. So, if you're on that subcommittee, two of them would have to be assigned to that position. And that's part of the responsibility of that subcommittee.
Yep.
And that, we could amend our town council rules accordingly.
Okay.
Can I just comment about that for a minute? Because the, the difference with the library than with the other commissions and stuff, that, that the subcommittees are responsible for, for attending, is they're not part of the town. And therefore, therefore, I, I believe that we do need to have people, this is as being part of the education subcommittee, I, I go to the, I go to the, the education board meetings. You know, I mean, you go to the, you know, people go to the rec meetings, et cetera. And it's just trying to open, on the side of, should we have people on the trustees? I, I firmly believe we should, and it is just opening the same spigot that is available to the town council with all of the other places we spend life.
John, if I may, I'd like to just try again to communicate what I was saying before, that when, when you and Kevin asked for our contributions for the MOU, and what we thought would be an important, important aspects to keep in mind, my understanding is that the design of the building, the town green, the parking, all has been segue to be dealt with through PNC. And my concern is, how can we have a memorandum of understanding, and how can we represent the taxpayers if we don't have firm ground in which, moving forward, we can control the total operational expenses of the building going forward? It's not just about being part of the building committee, it's having it in black and white as an agreement of what our expectations are of this building. Our expenses right now are about 2.2 million or so, and we can easily see it go up to 3.8, like Darien or, or Richfield, or higher. So, I don't think that it behooves us to be out of the conversation when the building is designed, and I don't think it serves the taxpayers to not walk on firm ground as to what we expect the building to do to meet, and, and the guidelines for it. And to pass it over to planning and zoning, planning and zoning, according to the statutes, can determine whether a building meets the zoning codes. But, it can't say we want it to be LEEDs, or to be LEED certified. We can enforce that, PNC can enforce it, but we can do it through an MOU. So, those are just some of the things, especially the town green. How are we going to make sure that this is open green in perpetuity?
Christina, we have the, we have the LEEDs standards in the, in the draft. And the, John, what, you want to address what, you, you had four requirements.
You're going to ask me to remember what my requirements were 60 days ago? Okay.
Parking? Was parking one of them?
Yes.
Is that in the MOU?
It's in the draft, but the parking will be dependent on what the planning and zoning will approve.
And, and we all know, or most of us know, that the parking underground of the library will cost the town to upgrade a storm drainage system and its sewer system along Main Street. That is why the basement of the library is constantly flooding. Those pipes need to be lowered and it has to be redone. I haven't heard any conversation with the additional cost to the town for the library to have underground parking.
I, I, I think that we're, we're going to have, I think what the word that Tom used was leverage. We're going to have two forms of leverage. We're going to have the form of leverage in the MOU. And Kevin has said that these issues that you raise are, like parking, are raised in the MOU. The second is, once we've agreed on the MOU, these are the basic things we need. And that doesn't mean getting very specific in the MOU. I don't think the MOU is going to get very specific on design questions. It's going to ask for the basic, I think, four things that, that were important to us. They're going to be in the MOU. And after that, we have to rely on our representation. So, we've got to get the representation right. We've got to have somebody in there who's making sure that they're worried about the finance, the design, because once we let the MOU go, that our representative is the, is the only input we have, or leverage, as Tom likes to say, over design.
Whatever the decisions are, I want everybody on town council to go into this commitment or bond issue with their eyes wide open, and understanding that the operational costs will increase substantially, and also that there will be additional costs to the town to lower those lines, so that parking can be accommodated at the lower level of the library. And I would like to see a number as to what that expenditure is going to be. I don't want to see another fields project where we find out that it isn't enough, that we need to approve more. We need to really not rush this, but really- that it isn't enough, that we need to approve more. We need to really not rush this, but really think through as to what we'll go across to the town will be in the short and long term.
Does anybody else want to tackle this, or should I?
I can, I can tackle it. John, do you want me to tackle it for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I, I think that that when we lay it out in the MO, in the MO, when we lay out what we want in the MOU from a financial standpoint, the kind of things that you're talking about, Christine, I think we can be very specific. I think we can, I think we can say in the MOU that the maximum, the maximum cost of the project is $30 million. That's what, that's what we voted on. We voted on $30 million. So trade offs get made as opposed to just cost being added. I think we can say we've, we, it's been represented to us that the operating cost will be essentially the same as it is for the current building, because that's what's been represented to us. And that's what we expect. All right. Now, it could be they don't, don't get there, but the MOU should be based on what has been represented to us. I think from, from how much detail we have, I think that we need from a financial standpoint, I think we need a cash flow by quarter for the entire project. Where the money comes from, where it goes to, how much is ours, how much is the library's, who's responsible for what and when. And we don't have that yet. I think that should be part of the MOU. And I've talked to Mr. Butman on that, on those exact issues. And he says, that's not a problem. We have that. And the MOU will, will, will state a maximum, a maximum cost so that there can be trade offs underneath it. And so I, I believe the financing should be laid out where it's coming from. Because in the end, if someone fails on the financing side, like, like the Fields, it comes back to us. Right? We have a half built building and then we say, well, what are we going to do now? So we need to make sure we understand all of us on the town council and in the town, what are we agreeing to? Because in the end, all of the money to pay for this, whether it's donated or taxed, comes from, it comes from our citizens.
Hey, John. John, could I speak? It occurs to me that, you know, we kind of played the MOU would be, the MOU is obviously an agreement that goes on through the building of the building and beyond. And it occurs to me that we don't need to approve the MOU before we do the bond resolution, because at the end of the day, the appropriation of the bond resolution is the final say. And the MOU would have been subject to the approval of the bond resolution anyway. So I think probably the MOU will be something subject to finalization up until the time you're going to approve the appropriation and bond resolution anyway. Because it's a roadmap of how we're going to proceed. And there's also terms that continue on while the building is being built and after the building is built and until the debt is, is paid, is repaid. So I think perhaps we've been thinking about having, having the MOU precede the bond resolution, but I think it's better to think of it in terms of it's a draft and it's going to be finalized as part of the appropriation and bond resolution.
Okay.
I think that that actually helps me. So the MOU is really like the parameters, the guidelines for the project. But then at some point, will we see specifics before we approve funding, meaning, you know, like the cost of every, you know, how we add up to the total amount for the bond? Will we see that as a town? First of all, will the town council get to see the finished MOU before we decide it's okay? And then will we get to see how all the dollars add up to the total bond amount?
Yes. Again, you're going to, you're going to see the MOU possibly in 10 days from now. If the Board of Finance approves it and we even get to the Board of Finance. And then you're going to see the project more as it gets filed with the planning and zoning. And there'll be a lot more detail that's going to have to be presented to you as part of approving the the appropriation and bond resolution. So that we're in a, we're in a process that is going to start soon. It's not going to end until two or three months.
It would be helpful to see a timeline of what we get, who it goes to, when we vote. And then if we're trying to make this November, 45 days before that referendum date, when that all has to be done. Or if we don't make it, that opens things up. If, right? I mean, we're sort of working under if we want to get it in before whatever 45 days is.
From the library's point of view, they would like to know that they can conclude their planning and zoning process by September. And they've concluded this process by September so that they can get on with the project for construction early in '21. They have to begin to spend money on on architecture. And I think they're reluctant to begin committing money to architectural drawings, which are expensive, probably a million dollars or more. Unless they know they have all the necessary approvals for the funding.
And approvals from P and Z?
Well, clearly.
I mean, August, a lot of people, we assume, will be away. It just seems so quick because it really is, it comes down to July, right? For planning and zoning meetings, for us to see what we need to see. That's, it just seems kind of quick, considering we're, things are so different as it is now anyhow with Zoom meetings and, I don't know. What does everyone think?
Sounds like we're talking about the, the target date on the half, on behalf of the library to get the full presentation ready is the, is the presentation of planning and zoning. And I would just hope that that date is before our final approval. So we get a chance to look at all that stuff in the same detail that planning and zoning does. And hopefully that's before July, or I'm not sure the, the timing is going to work for the summer.
Let's say for argument's sake that the town council approves the MOU at the earliest possible moment, the June meeting. And therefore, it or to P and Z, and let's say it goes to them at the earliest possible moment, maybe the July, their July meeting. I, I don't think our bond approval would occur before that P and Z July presentation. That's, that's, so you would come back, approve the bonds, having seen the P and Z presentation in deliberation on, on their plan.
I'd be curious to know, I was happy with what Kevin said about merging the two dates, but I just would want to be sure the library is happy with that. Or do they need a vote of confidence this month?
The, the library wants to get started as soon as possible. And the reason is relates to fundraising. It also relates to the fact that because of the pandemic, there's a lot of hungry labor out there and they can negotiate better prices. So the sooner they start this project, the feeling is the better pricing they'll get. And that if we, if we slow this down, it'll cost them more money. And since we're not flexible on how much we give them, the one benefit we can give them is a quick decision.
It's Penny.
Go ahead, Penny.
I don't want to appear to be an obstructionist. I understand we need a new library that the building is in, you know, dilapidated estate. I just think that there are a lot of things going on in our world right now, the, the greater world and our town world. We get financial reports that everybody's going to be paying their taxes and we're in great financial condition because we've got 25, 29 million dollars in our general fund. Well, we really have not experienced what's going to happen when people have to pay their, their taxes in July. You know, we're working on January's experience. We don't know many people in town have lost their jobs. What is that impact then on the library's ability to fundraise? Or what our expectations are from our taxpayers as to what the town spends its money on from a government operations standpoint? As you know, we've got 56 buildings. Every single one of them has a long list of projects that need to be addressed. And we're working a way at it, but that list just doesn't go away. And I think that, that there needs to be really serious conversation about the level of commitment. The, the budget for the library is 2.4 million and with, with commentary that it'll increase 2% a year. Well, that's not the end of what the town supports the library. We have a half a million in, in health services. So that's very close to 3 million. It's not 2.4. And I don't know that the public really understands the, all of those numbers and the dynamic of the numbers and the degree to which we support already the library. And so I just think that, you know, to, to, I, I don't want to feel like we're being put, we're pushed, being pushed into this because of, okay, construction costs are less now. You know, are they really? I mean, until you go out and, and bid them, you don't know that for sure. So I, I have always, I, I just feel pushed on this.
Penny, there is no doubt about it. We are being pushed. And you know what? We're going to just have to suck it up and accept the fact that this is not a year that we want to be making decisions. Everybody is totally stressed out all the time. You know what? This is a decision that we're going to have to make. We're going to just have to suck it up and make a decision with the best information we have. We don't know what in unemployment or what the state of the downtown economy is going to be. We're going to just, they taught me this in the Army. Lieutenant, you're going to have to make a decision with the best information you have at the moment. Kevin is asking us to make a decision in June and July. You can say no, but you're going to have to make a decision in June and July, based on what we know.
I understand all that.
And also, let me, let me address a couple of points.
Okay.
You know, for example, today at our advisory meeting, I don't think the indications that there's, there's going to be commercial property owners asking for tax deferral. Right? As much as we anticipate for landlords. So that, and also our unemployment rate in New Canaan is 2.9% among the lowest in the state as, as of April figures. So we don't expect a large amount of tax deferral from individuals, given the standard you have to meet to be effective. And I think the Board of Finance, again, the Board of Finance will look at this next Tuesday. They'll look at it again in, in July. But I don't think financial considerations are going to be what holds this up.
John, I've said this before, I, I view this as a 50 to 100 year project. And, you know, whether we're making a decision during Black Friday, Black Monday, during a recession, during a real estate bubble, during, you know, you can name a million things we've been through since the library started on this road. We've been through 9/11. You, you name the things that we've gone through as a community while the library has been pushing ahead with their projects, buying real estate, getting the pieces together, putting us all together where it is today. This didn't start yesterday. So this is just a continuation of a long term plan that the community has asked for and that we've all known about for a long, long time. Making a decision on a Zoom video is something I never thought I'd ever have to do, but, you know.
Zoom before three months ago.
I'd much prefer to be in a room with all you people. That's for sure.
I, I, I think you articulated what I was trying to say better. The reason we have to make a decision now is because we are just a piece among a whole series of decisions. The P and Z decision, the library board decision, donor decisions. And so it's not fair to all the other constituencies that we say, well, we're not comfortable making a decision. If we're not comfortable because we need more information, then we need to ask for it.
Well, I've got a question about the donations. When a library last spoke to town council, they said they had about $9 million in the bank and $15 million in pledges. Do we know if that's changed at all, if there's more in the bank or if there are more pledges?
16 million in pledges. And, and about the $9 million in payments.
Just to be clear, Kevin, Kevin, that's 25. 16 and nine is 25. That's what they have today?
No, 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 no. Of the, of the 16 million pledges, they have nine paid.
Right, of the 16.
Yeah. Of the 16.
Kevin, I'd just like to note that as of April of this year, unemployment in New Canaan is 4.7%.
So back to the MOU, Kevin. In the last, in the last version that we've seen of the MOU, when is the timing of our $10 million contribution? And do they have to meet any criteria before they get it?
Yeah, they have to have raised, I mean, the latest proposal is we'll, we'll match pari per suif. So if they, if they have $9 million, they'll get $9 million. If they have $10 million, they'll get $10 million.
Got it. And they have nine. So right now, they, they've earned nine, nine of our 10.
Right.
And is our money first in or last in or alongside their own? Go ahead.
Our money, by the time it starts going in, will be first in before there's ever any bank borrowing. So the, they want to get underway with their public phase of their, of their campaign to raise another 5 million. And then the, the pledges will come in over the next year, over the next two, two years. So they're on a schedule to have their $16 million plus another five plus. And actually, you know, the, their latest, they believe now the total cost of the project is 35 million, not 30 million.
Of course.
So.
I'd just like to throw in about, you know, about MOUs and timing and getting rushed, you know, that Penny's concerned with. The other thing about this MOU is, you know, if they want us to act on it in, on the 17th, then based on tonight's conversation, they know that the town council is going to be very reluctant to do it without adequate representation on the building committee and the board.
Yes.
And if they want to get it, if they want to get it through in one night, you know, lickety split, then there you go.
An adequate representation is what for you, Sven? Two and two?
Two and two.
Agreed.
There's no diff, there's no distance between me and Steve.
But that's what we have in the draft.
Two members of town council on the, on the, on the building committee and two members on the board. Okay.
No, no, no. We have two on, two on the Board of Trustees and two on the, on the building committee.
Both, two town council members on the, on the building committee, two town council members on the Board of Trustees. Very good.
Well, again, that's what you folks are all going to request.
You just got to take it under advisement, Kevin. It is your MOU, but you're hearing from.
Well, you haven't, you haven't taken a vote. I mean, is that, is that a?
No, I can take a straw poll now if you like, or we, you know, if that's going to be helpful to you. Does anybody else want to talk about it? I've heard from Christine, I've heard from Steve, and I've heard from Sven that they want two plus two. Anybody think that that's over, overreaching, too much? Mike?
The issue we haven't discussed is, are we talking about full fiduciary members on, on, I guess in both those, but certainly the board? Is that what we want to do? Or are these ex officio?
Ex officio. I think they have to be full members, otherwise they don't have a say on anything that happens.
But Christine, it's only two members of a 15 member board. So.
I have an 18 member.
18 member board.
Seems out that there's a potential conflict of interest in having fiduciary status, right?
Yes.
The concern, the concern the library board has, has of granting, of granting full, full membership is the conflict of interest issue. I don't know whether it's a real issue or not. I, I just don't know.
Well, I, we should get, we should have legal input on it if there's any doubt.
Guys, this is Mike. I'm pretty much in agreement with what Steve Carl said. One question though I have, and I think Tom is right about getting a legal opinion. And I don't know the answer to this, but the town, town charter talks about town, you know, our town officers and, and other, you know, boards and committees that can and cannot serve on, right?
Right.
I'd like them, like it says provisions in this charter prohibiting any town officer from holding any other office of trust or emolument shall not be construed to prohibit service on committees of the town government or on charter. service on committees of the town government or on charter revision commissions or other extraordinary ad hoc commissions. So I just wanna make sure that any of our members that are sitting on any other board, you know, it's consonant with the town charter.
Yeah, but Mike, that refers only to town committees and not, not, not third party. The charter speaks to only the town committees.
Except during.
Any other office of trust. So you're talking about fiduciary duty, any other office of trust. So if, if our people are on other boards, which I'm in, I'm in favor of, by the way, I just wanna make sure there's no issue. And there may be none.
Except to recuse yourself from the budget.
I think the first question to ask is, do we want, do we want our members to be full, full voting members and have, and take on fiduciary duty on the board? My take was, I thought that was a good idea. I've had a lot of, there's, there's varying opinions on that. But, you know, I mean, when you're a full member, you pay attention.
But what does that do to us then at budget time? If you voted on the budget from the library perspective as a member, and I am understanding that that would be as a contributing member financially as well, is that not a conflict of interest with, you know, our vote then on the town council? Would you have to recuse yourself?
Penny, you tell me. I don't, I don't know. I.
Yeah, I think, I think you do. I mean, I sit on other boards and when it comes to funding, say, say a board that is giving grants to organizations, if I sit on an organization that's requesting a grant, I have to recuse myself during the granting process. Because it's a conflict.
Kevin, can you get us an opinion from the town attorney on whether, if a member of the town council wanted to serve as a full board member, whether that would present a conflict in the attorney's mind? Because the way each of us is interpreting seems to be different.
John, that's what I, that's what I mentioned in the email I sent about that, that very topic to you was that I believe that if someone is serving as a full board, full board member on the library, went through all the meetings, went through all the process, it's impossible to separate the will of getting a full budget pushed through the council. And there is an inherent conflict there. I just believe that because I've seen, I've seen it in other areas and it would lead me to believe that it's impossible to be able to do both. That's my opinion, without having any kind of conflict.
But Steve, you could recuse yourself from voting if there's a conflict of interest or if there is a conflict with the town council's vote later on.
You have to decide which duty comes first. So yes, maybe you could structure it so that you spent, you recruited, in your town council capacity, you're recruiting yourself from all decisions, but is that really what we want?
Right, it kinda defeats the purpose of actually serving on the board.
The advice I got from the attorney, it was previous town attorney when I was on the zoning board of appeals was he said, can you be fair? And are you making money? And I said, no. And he said, then you must vote on the matters before you. And I said, but what if I am a fan of, you know, what if I've known this person my whole life? And he said, comes back to can you be fair? If you can be fair and you're not making, you don't have a financial interest, a personal financial interest. And so I used to ask myself that on the land trust board. I don't have a financial interest. I'm a fan of the land trust, or a lot of us are fans of the land trust. And from time to time, I would recuse myself on land trust votes, but it didn't mean that I couldn't serve on both boards.
Right, but you weren't a fiduciary to two organizations that were on opposite sides of an issue.
True, the land trust wasn't asking us for, you know, for a budget at that time. And when they started to, I got off the board.
And the library is unique, the library is unique because of the amount of, the percentage of the budget that the town, you know, funds over there. So it's a, we already are so involved over there. I don't know, I just see, it's, it's a tough one to me. I just don't, I don't see that having two council members with full voting rights on there, taking everybody aside, I'm not even thinking about people that we currently have. I'm just thinking about the structure in the future. I just don't see that as a logical move. That's my opinion.
So Kevin, let's get an opinion from the town attorney and maybe it'll help us on our meeting next week make a decision. And, and I guess we'll discuss whether they're ex officio or not. Another question that Rich came up, said the other day is for how long? How long is representation necessary? One, one, one position is that we only need representation for as long as this project is being built and decisions are being made on a 30, 35 million dollar library. And once it's built, our risk is diminished and we don't need the represent, we don't need the same level of representation. A second position, Rich's position, he said, these bonds are for 20 years, half a million dollars a year for 20 years to pay off your, your $10 million obligation. So we should have representation for 20 years. That's an alternative position. So does anybody have any opinion? And the argument against that was, once you issue the bonds, you're not taking on more risk or less risk each year. You're just, that you happen to have those standing 20 years. And so there are decisions being made over the course of 20 years that change your, your risk tolerance. So does anybody have any opinion on for how long we need seats on the library board? It gets back to the question.
John, can I just make, clarify what you and I talked about is I believe that, that as long as we are providing two-thirds of their operating budget, in addition to backup financing for anything that happens, we ought to have a couple of seats on the, on the trustees forever.
Correct.
That's what I think. And I think we should do that whether we're building a library or not, or issuing $10 million a bond.
I don't agree with that. I think that once the project is complete, to Sven's concern, the biggest concern is that there's cost overruns and, and that seems to be what's bothering a lot of people on this, on this council. So, you know, the, the library's been running for 100 years, so I'm not sure what value that board seats, that is gonna add from an operational standpoint going forward.
It will provide, it will provide more information to the town council. That's what it will provide.
Well, again, to Kevin's point, we can get that information.
You can't go sit on the board. You can't go sit in the board meetings.
Right.
I don't know about that, actually. I, I think that if you ask the library to sit in on their meeting, they'd welcome you in a minute. We've had, when I was on the board, we, people came in and listened that were interested in what was going on on the board. I don't know that that's a closed meeting.
No, but I don't, I don't believe that ought to be a one-off. Do you decide I wanna go to a meeting and let me go call and see if I can get invited? I think we ought to be, have continual access as we do to every commission, right? Where we spend a heck of a lot less money.
The library has been operated as a 501(c)(3) and they have kept things out of the public eyes. So they don't post when their meetings are, and we wouldn't know about it unless we have somebody in there being notified. But because we provide them with two-thirds of their operational budget, they are precluded to be foible and to post as if they're an arm of the town. And I think that they need to, to abide by that and respect that.
All right, guys, I mean, I just, the way I've always looked at the library is that they're a partner of the town and they serve the town in good faith and good standing. And the reputation that that library's had since 1913, there's no one in this town that doesn't love that organization. So I, I mean, I can see the, the issue of trying to get people on the board, but I think it should be a discussion with the board and, and make it, make it a partnership that it is rather than us demanding to be on there. I just, I don't want this to become adversarial with the board. They don't deserve that.
Steve, I hope it doesn't, I hope it doesn't come out that way. I chatted with, with Bob about this a couple days ago. He doesn't have an issue with it. Okay? I mean, he has, they have the same concern that you have, which is conflict of interest if they're a real board member. What he told me is, he said, I don't have a problem with, with, with somebody that is, you know, that is not a real board member, that is, you know, a ex officio member. And he said, I don't think the rest of the board will have a problem. This is not meant to be acrimonious. I mean, the only reason it came up is, does it need to get addressed in this MOU? In my mind, it doesn't even really need to get addressed in this MOU, but it needs to be addressed on a longer-term basis, as you're talking about, the partnership. I mean, there is nothing better for the town than the library's board and the way the library runs. We're getting a $35 million library for 10 million bucks. We only pay two-thirds the expense, we don't pay 100%. We, do you know what I mean? I mean, we are totally blessed by this thing, right? And so I don't mean to come across this the wrong way, but I think our fiduciary duty to the town as the town council is to be well-informed on everything that's going on where we are the ultimate backup. Because if these guys fail, we pick up the pieces. And they never have, and I'm not even saying they will, right? But nonetheless, we're spending $35 million. That's a high-risk time, right? It's a time where we ought to be very well-informed.
I think the partnership, membership should continue on because we are partners in this and we all know each other, but in 10 years, things change, people move out. I mean, it kind of establishes a position and a connection to this large institution in the middle of town that the town supports. You really do need representation. So I don't, I don't think it should be a temporary thing.
All right, I think, I think we've heard what the ideal would be. The ideal would be a partnership where they wanted the town's participation and representation. We want that representation. That ignores for a moment that the 12 town council members, you know, were asking you to not only be a full town council member, but a very involved library board member. And it also requires a lot of time. And so we can talk about it in the abstract, but if we turn to Steve Carl and say, are you willing to take on what amounts to another full-time job? Or Mark Jimskey, are you willing to take on the level of commitment here? You know, it's, it's, it's gonna be, you know, it comes down to the individual. Once we get past the legal question of conflict of interest and we ask our members, town council members, to be full members and totally invested members of the library board, it's gonna be a commitment. So it's gonna come down, so we can't, we can't just wave our magic wand and say, okay, we're gonna make it happen. I think at some point, it's gonna come down to individual decisions on whether they, they feel they can do it.
John, you know, we can go back to the committee structure on the council. We do have five members who are assigned to, you know, the general government committee. And among the five of them, they're, I mean, even if it's a rotational thing, someone from the council should be at every meeting. I'm a little uncomfortable if, if there's a requirement to sit on the board as a full contributing member, not just from time commitment, but financially, because I think there is a financial commitment, then there really would be a conflict, I believe, as an elected official to be contributing to an organization that we then are part of approval of their budget. So my recommendation would be to go back in a stronger way within the council of representation, you know, as an ex officio person.
You wanna talk about design? Let's talk about design for a moment. Design means lead certification, design means parking, underground parking, surface parking. It means, it means furniture. Somebody said the word furniture at the top of it. Are we satisfied that if we have sufficient representation on the boards, that we can cede questions of design to both planning and zoning and to our representative on the boards, building committee and, and library board? Those of you who had concerns about leads and parking, are you satisfied with that?
You getting cut off? Could you repeat that?
I'll say it in one sentence. It was one of what Kevin was referring to as one of the four things that I thought should go in the MOU. And I'm beginning to think is that we can't specify what the, what the library's gonna look like in the MOU. We don't have enough information. We have to let the building committee go through those questions of design with the architect, weighing them against budget. So the question is, are we comfortable that P&amp;Z is gonna take on the question of design and we don't have to answer it all in the MOU?
I'm not, I'm personally not comfortable with it because in one of the presentations that the library had, they said that one of the things that we cut off if the project went over 30 million was the parking underground. And we don't have excessive parking in town to just hit a center school lot or meat court lot. So to me, parking is very critical.
Okay, why? What do you, what about the parking is critical? That they have enough or where it is?
That, no, that they have enough parking for their expanded building and their staff and that they're not going to rely on center school lot for their parking needs in part or in whole.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just challenge that and say, so why do you not believe that P&amp;Z is the best authority to have that conversation and talk about traffic flows around that whole block and egress and all the different questions? Why are, why, why should that be in the MOU?
Because we have, we know and are fully aware of the parking needs in the center of town. And this is an institution that will require more parking, not less. And to take up the two parking lots that we have on either side of it would be basically a detriment to the businesses and other entities that use the parking.
I agree, it's a big concern, but why is P&amp;Z not the right body to, to take on that question and negotiate with them?
Because if we're gonna give them the $10 million, we need to know for sure that certain things will be met and parking should be part of it.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, John, I just have a concern. I think the first time I heard that the new plan would not solve the flooding problems that they currently have and that the town would then be somehow involved with having to fix that drain on Main Street so that it doesn't back up into the new parking. Is that correct?
I don't think that's correct. This is the first I've heard about.
First I've heard of it too, so.
I know that there has been drain issues in the past. I am assuming that when they build this new building, that they're not creating new drainage problems. This is the first I've heard.
No, but I mean, is someone gonna solve the old drainage problem? I mean, obviously it's a problem now. And is that thing that P&amp;Z would then be, you know, if this is true, then it's gotta be addressed somewhere. Because if it's gonna be an additional cost to the town, I mean, you could argue that, you know, the town is responsible for those drains, so the town should fix it anyway. But I think that should be clarified. That worries me.
We'll get clarification on the drains.
The Lam Room flooded multiple times and has the town ever been held responsible?
We're the cause of it.
Right. But when the drain is flooded, it's their insurance that's taking care of it, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, they're gonna excavate almost an entire city block to get this project done. To assume that they're not going to address drainage would be a major understatement. I mean, how are they gonna build a building like this without looking at all of that? And guys, I mean, think about the, the meetings that P&amp;Z has gone through, anytime we've ever done a big project in town. I mean, most recently, obviously, you think of talking about Ono Bridge, right? And what happened up there with Waveney. This town comes out and expresses their opinion time and time again. Every meeting that P&amp;Z has is four hours long. We're all gonna be able to weigh in on what color we think the new library is gonna be and what the trim should be. And, and, you know, those are the kinds of meetings that P&amp;Z has. I mean, that's just, this, this is what we do. And how they, how they serve on that commission, John Goodman is going up to heaven, that's all I know, because he is amazing to be able to get through all the minutia that they do on every single project and be able to, to be able to come to another meeting. I mean, those meetings for the library, if you think people came out for. I mean, those meetings for the library, if you think people came out for O and O, I mean, you'll have all kinds of opinions, because this is right downtown, but that's what they do.
Pandemic.
Steve, you remember how many times Town Hall used to flood at the basement?
Yes.
Okay, in order to fix that problem, they had to redo the stormwater drainage and the sewer lines coming out of Town Hall. You had Garrick and Erbs recently, the basement flooded, the whole system backed into their basement. It's happened to the library many times. It's not up to the library to figure out what the drainage is for the town, it's up to the town to design it and redo it properly, so these businesses do not get impacted by our lack of due diligence.
I, Christine, I couldn't agree with you more. I believe that the town should be involved and solve the drainage problem on South Avenue, South Avenue and Main Street. It's the perfect time to do it, we should do it.
Agreed, but we just need to plan for that additional expense. It could be two and a half, it could be $10 million, it could be more. And I think that that needs to be looked at by the engineers and come, come up to a solution.
I believe, whenever you do a project like this, generally, the costs are less, because you've got the equipment in place, the excavation is there, it's the perfect time for us to do it.
Steve, the line has to be dropped from Town Hall all the way down Main Street to the transfer, to the sewage treatment plant. It's not a small project, it's not just the block where the library's located.
You're, you're, you're out of my pay grade, I have no idea, but I'm sure Tiger's gonna handle it.
Okay.
Let's find out.
I know, Kevin, is it reasonable to say that we're not gonna be able to get drainage and other questions into the MOU? We're not gonna see those in the MOU, are we?
Drainage was not something you asked for, so now it's a new ask.
I think parking was in there, and one of the things that I thought should be in the MOU was underground parking. I thought it was an important promise of the original design. What I've been told more recently is that, that the, by putting all the parking underground and, and the egress might dump too much traffic onto the wrong streets. And so, and reading this MOU, I started to realize that I don't know about the traffic studies, I haven't done traffic studies, I have a feeling about traffic, but I don't, I'm not the expert. And that's when I began to realize that I thought P and Z would do traffic studies, or over them, probably make a, a better decision we could on the town council, as to whether underground parking is necessary, and if so, how much? And if center school lot presents an opportunity, and if so, how much? I think that's gonna take an incredible amount of work on the library, building committees, the architects, and P and Z's, and I don't think therefore, it's a question we can answer in the MOU. I, I welcome town council members to tell me I'm wrong, and that underground parking needs to go in the MOU, but I'm coming off of, in my own mind, I'm coming off of that as a precondition of the MOU. I like underground parking, I just don't know that I can make it a condition. Does anybody else feel one way, either way? Okay.
Wait, sorry, I was on mute. So if there's no underground parking at all, is there any parking on the library grounds? Or would it all go to the center school lot?
I, I guess what I'm saying is, I still hope that there's underground parking. I, I just don't know that I can specify how much, and where, and why, and what for, that I really feel like I can trust John Goodwin to answer those questions better than we can.
John, do you remember when Walmart was being built, and P and Z rejected any underground parking? And now we're kicking ourselves that that wasn't allowed, because I think it was a number in the 30s or 40 number, 40 parking spaces that would have been allowed for? I don't think P and Z always gets it right, and we know that there's a deficiency of parking in the downtown. Why would we not want to make sure that that is addressed?
We, we might. If you all feel that underground parking is a major point that you wanna, you know, you wanna fight for, say so. I don't hear anybody saying that that's something that we need to address in the MOU.
I think it's important. I would say it should be part of it. It's also part of the proposed 35 million cost, right?
It was anticipated as part of the cost, yes.
Right. Yeah, I really, I mean, I was concerned that we were losing the above-ground parking, but I felt better knowing there was some underground parking. But if that goes away, that is a big concern.
Right.
You do. Liz?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm saying if, their whole vision is, as my recollection, is the parking's all underground. If that parking doesn't materialize for some reason, I mean, the parking at the library is an issue right now with the current floor plan they have, and the above-ground parking they have. If you lose that, I think it's a disaster.
Steve, you're just smiling.
Planning and zoning is not gonna put a building of that magnitude up without proper parking. Period.
Agreed.
You know, I don't, I don't know why we're having a conversation like this. I mean, it's, we, the planning and zoning, the planning and zoning committee we have right now is one of the best in town. I have full confidence that they're gonna do the right thing. Every meeting is gonna be noticed, every meeting we can attend, every meeting we can participate in. And the library's not gonna build that building without underground parking, there's no way they're gonna build that building without underground parking.
But they stated that that would be the first thing to go, if the building price came in over 30 million.
Well, that's great, Christine, but where, so, so we would have to revisit that, but I don't know where in the world they would propose to put parking, you know, they have to provide parking. It's just the way it is.
Yeah, Christine, I think even if they decide that they think they can save $5 million by not doing the parking, they're not gonna get a building permit unless they have the parking.
Correct.
I agree.
I, I do as well.
I have to trust P and Z won't let them build a building if they don't have enough parking. And, I, I gotta trust P and Z. All right, the last thing I wanted to tackle was finance, money, that's the biggest question. I think that the MOU, and, and I just don't wanna surprise you all next week for the first time with new facts about spending. The latest thinking is, it's still a $10 million commitment. The question is, what happens if you spend more than 30? Well, they've come back and said, yes, we think that we may spend more than 30. And we've asked them, well, how much? And they said, as much as 35. What's the MOU gonna say? It's gonna say about 35. Well, does that mean that you're gonna require more money from the town? They said, no. And we said, where are you gonna get that money? And they said, we're gonna, we're gonna raise it. In the MOU, you're gonna see, it anticipates that they're gonna need working capital during the project, and they're gonna go out and get a mortgage with a local bank for that $5 million of working capital during the project. I asked, should the town be the bank? We're the cheapest source of money. We are the backstop behind the library's finances anyway, why do you need a bank? And the answer I got was, banks are very good at evaluating business plans, underwriting, and checking out cash flows and helping, and helping the library through this, much better than the town council at, at helping them manage the working capital. So, I believe that there's probably a great value in involving a bank and allowing them to work with a bank to solve the, the, the working capital question. Does anybody have any opinions about this, or any questions about what's gonna show up in the MOU next week, with regard to our, the, our total commitment, the timing of our commitment, and any possible debt that the library might take on?
And, and John, this money would come from, the money we'd be lending them for working capital needs would come from?
We would, we would put up our $10 million, assuming that they've raised 10 million. I mean, they've got 16, but that they've actually got 10 in hand. So we've given them 10, they've got their 10, they get going, and at some point, some of those pledges may, maybe, let's say, let's say you've donated a million dollars, but you've done it over five years. They may need, they may need, not necessarily, but they may need a bank loan, a, a letter, you know, a line of credit, so that they can keep the project moving.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
Your alternative to that?
Was to, rather than ask the town, the, the bank for a, you know, a, a letter, a line of credit, that we, we could provide that from the town. I've been told that it's not a good idea.
Well, then, let's leave it alone. Let's. That doesn't, yeah, I, I don't see that as, yeah, that, that was my question.
It, it came up.
That, that's complicated.
It, it came up because when a bank loans money, they say, we wanna be in the first position, we want the first mortgage on the library. And to some of us, that was a scary prospect. That's what you give up when you, when you allow a bank in. A bank comes in and they take the first position on the library.
John, the good news is, it's, it's, it's a local bank, it's Bankwell, and, you know, the board of Bankwell, and, and that bank in particular is very community oriented, and I think most of us are aware of that bank, very strong bank, well backed, and, you know, if, if there is a local bank to take it on, this is, you know, they're the right one. So, I, I have confidence, I think it's set up the right way. I would not want the town to be on the hook for the additional money, I just think that's a, you know, A, a bad precedent, and B, not, not a place you wanna go into lending. So, I, I, I think we should leave, leave it as it is, put Bankwell in place, and, and get it moving.
I agree with that.
Rich, I mean, I'm just, you know, maybe I'm saying too much, but Rich and I went to those meetings with two members of the Board of Finance, and we said, wait a minute, we're backing this anyway, we are the cheapest source of money, we don't need, you know, a third party coming in. If we're, if we're on the hook for another $5 million, we need to know it. We, we wanna know it first, and we wanna be able, you know, we don't wanna hand the keys to the library and say, go ahead, borrow money, you know? But, over time, we're can, being convinced that Bankwell lends an important set of skills and experience to this that we don't have.
Yes, because they're lending to institutions that have working capital constraints, that, that's what they do. We're not, to Steve's point, we're not in the business of, of that. I think what your concern is, is the underlying issue that you're sort of implying is that you're concerned about the money that they need, and whether or not there's commitments behind it, which is a separate issue.
I, I'm putting this out there, and I'm telling you, it was an issue, and this is how we've been thinking about this issue, because I don't want you guys to all say, when you see the MOU, what, what is this mortgage business? What is this debt business? I need, I need you guys to opine now, so that Kevin gets the MOU right.
John, 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 it's a cash flow loan against their pledges, right? They like to borrow most $5 million, so.
Why would that be on the MOU anyway?
Because we otherwise have a clause that says you can't borrow.
Okay.
It started with a clause, you can't borrow, and they said, we need to borrow, and this is how they're solving it.
Well, we said you can't borrow unsecured. So.
So will the MOU, can the MOU spell out donors and amounts, like proof, a, a deadline for proof of funds? That commitments will actually be honored, considering, the actual new Canadian unemployment rate is 4.7, I just looked it up. So considering the situation in the economy, can we add something in the MOU that asks for proof of committed funds?
I, I don't, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't know if the right place for that is in the MOU. Maybe the MOU can anticipate future diligence on that. So let's say on day one, we contribute our $10 million, $10 million of pledges have come in, and they begin work. And what you're talking about is, a year into it, when they say, when, when, when somebody should raise their hand and say, so how are we doing on the additional 10, 15 million where the pledges, are we ahead, or are we behind? And have, and does this present new risk for the town, or new risk for your bank that the town stands behind? Is that what you're saying?
I, I guess that would meet it, if you ask for like a monthly report on pledges, and, you know, a status. I mean, I think the town has to really pay attention, we have to pay attention for the taxpayers, you know? Because you can't, if, if they don't get some of these millions, and they're 70% done with the project, of course, someone's gonna step in, and it might be the town, just to make it finished. So that's kind of.
So what I hear you saying, in the MOU, we should say that we would like reporting at some frequency on how we're doing on total pledges and collections against those pledges, so that we, the town council, are not surprised if we're missing and expected to make up a shortfall. Is that what you're saying?
I think that would be helpful, and even.
I agree.
By the time we sign the MOU, I think that should sort of be the first report. Where are we?
I'm not worried about the first month, I'm worried about the 24th month.
Which is why I think all of that information comes from your ex officio members on the board.
But it has to be mandatory that the library produced the documents without even being asked. They should be submitting it to the town, whether it's to the CFO or the Board of Selectmen, but there has to be a continuing information gathering, and that can't be gotten from the meeting, that's a document.
Okay, so.
The, the MOU contains, contains words, or I'm sure will contain words around, around required reporting for good governance and managing the project, but I think the MOU has to contain as well, the cash plan, which reflects the timing of the, of not only what is in the bank today, but when the rest comes in, and, and balances out to the project, such that we know how much money they intend to borrow from, from Bankwell. And, and you've got a measurement stick against when, you know, they're starting to get behind. I mean, there's no reason that a project that's 30, 30, 35 million isn't laid out, that this much money comes from the town in these quarters, this much money comes from the library in these quarters, and this much money fills the gap with Bankwell, because the library doesn't have pledges for that yet. But that, that ought to be an appendix to the, to the MOU.
All right, we've got roughly 11 minutes to go before nine o'clock. Have I left anything out? Is anything need to be said? Any comments on anything at all from, from the council?
John, I just have a quick question. What about the town green being left as a town green in perpetuity? Is that part of the MOU still?
My understanding, after talking to the library board members, and my last view of the document, is that, that yes, that is a key piece of the library design, and therefore is still in the, it's one of the four that Kevin referenced that I asked for. It was a key piece of the design, that they, that they have a town green, and that they can't sell off pieces of land. And the original document said, you can't sell land, you can't mortgage anything, you can't, you can't, you can't, yes, the town green's still in there.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Can I just repeat that? I think it would be really helpful to have a timeline of everything that's coming up. The MOU approved by town council, approved by Board of Finance, just kind of lay it all out, so we're all on the same page, if possible.
That's a great idea, Mary.
And where did we, Steve Carl, where did we spend, where did we come out? out on the representation question? We're going to ask for, according to Sven, and according to Steve, they're going to be ex officio because we think at this time that that's the only way to get past conflict of interest questions. So more representation, but ex officio, yes? Okay.
Why don't we wait to hear from the town attorney whether or not that is a conflict in this case?
Okay.
Oh, I can't imagine it's not.
Even if, even if the town attorney says you can, which is what he said to me, you can, and although it wasn't this particular situation, many members of the town council are not comfortable with being put on both boards. So even if he gave permission, I'm not sure Steve Carl or, or Sven would feel comfortable sitting on both boards in total. Any other issues? Have I missed anything?
Can I just add to the board membership? I know we talked about it a lot, but I don't think financing would be the only thing that would be discussed. So I, I'm leaning towards ex officio, but on the other hand, there is an ethics committee that if you're a voting member, there's recourse to do something about a conflict of interest. So having someone that can actually vote and just excuse themselves when it's financial might be helpful.
Okay, we'll talk it over with the town attorney.
Another way to, another way to, another point of view on this is that I would feel that if there is a conflict, I don't want it to be resolved in favor of somebody ducking votes on the town council. I want first loyalty to the town council.
Yes.
I agree with that. I think that's who we signed up for.
There's a big storm coming.
I can hear it.
It's pouring.
It's pouring in my lap.
You better hurry up. You better hurry out to the parking lot.
John, can I ask you one last question? Where are we with the 1913 building?
The 1913 building is not in the MOU draft that I've seen, which means that it's a question, at this moment, I believe it's a question for P&amp;Z. P&amp;Z on all questions of design and parking. And if you think it needs to be in the MOU, then we got to make sure that enough people on the town council say so and put it in the MOU. But nobody has told me that they think that, that, that question needs to go in the MOU yet, except for you.
And parking?
Parking, I thought, I, I, that was one of the four things I told Kevin that I thought was important, that it go in the MOU, and now I'm, I'm up to my, on the parking question. So I don't know.
Do you take a straw poll on the parking?
Okay. What's the question?
The question is, should the parking requirement be part of the MOU?
Can I, can I ask a question before we?
Or where it goes?
It has to go on their property. If they put parking on their property at street level, then there is no town green.
No, 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 no. See, they can solve it many ways. They could put it underground, or they could acquire more property, or they could put it underground, or they could put part of it underground. And, and it started to get sufficiently complicated where I said, we're not going to answer this in the MOU. We can put in the MOU that they have sufficient parking as decided by P&amp;Z, but I don't know that we can answer the question this week where it's going to go.
Well.
One thing I don't want to do is to make the whole project contingent on whether they have underground parking. You know, I just, or that it exits onto Main Street.
You do not want to make it contingent on underground parking.
Well, I'd be happy to say you should, you should present it to planning and zoning with underground parking, and it should price it that way. But I don't want to prejudge what deal gets cut at P&amp;Z.
But we can always amend the MOU if that were the case, but to leave it out and then to leave it up in the air whether or not they're going to have parking would be a great mistake.
There, we can put in the MOU that they have to have adequate parking, but Tom is saying, do you want to make it a condition of the MOU that it be underground? And I just don't think we have enough information.
Well, if they scaled it back and did above-ground parking, I mean, if we just say adequate parking, that should be enough, I would think.
That's what I'm hearing from you and Tom. Mike? Liz? Robin?
I got Steve's point before that, you know, we, it does kind of fall under the purview of planning and zoning to make sure that parking is rest. I'm satisfied with that answer.
Okay.
Five letters, guys, P-A-N-D-Z.
Is that how you spell it?
Yes, P&amp;Z. Thank you, John Goodwin.
All right, so it's 8:57. Is there any parting comments, anything?
I just, you know, if we're through with the library, John, I just want to take a minute to acknowledge Mike Handler and the service he's done to, for New Canaan for the past 10 years. And, you know, there'll be a time and a place that's, it's much better to thank him formally, but he's done a great job for New Canaan, and we're going to miss him. And I'm sure it was a tough decision, but, you know, we'll move on and hopefully wish him well.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I'm glad you raised that. It was, I know it was a big shock to people today when we heard the news that Mike Handler was resigning, because he's been a fixture in all of our lives. He's been a fixture on the four o'clock call. He's been on a fixture on the seven o'clock call for many years, and he gives great comfort during stressful times to people throughout town with that one-way call. And I know that he's given people confidence that we have a plan, we're working through the plan, and that that conversation is happening between him and Jen and Kevin. And I know a lot of people got very nervous when they heard he was leaving. But I have to say, and he's done a phenomenal job, and I don't know that, you know, you know, and it'll be a great loss, but I have to say that I think that the organization is there. I've seen Jen working at this. I feel confidence in Jen, and I do feel that New Canaan will be able to make its way through this crisis with Jen's leadership and, and the new leader of the EOC is a Jack. So we'll pick up. I know it's a shock for everybody, and, and I'm very disappointed that he's leaving, but we're going to make it through this.
We have a great team. Thank you, Kevin, at the head, and Jen, and everyone else. So, you know, we all work together, and, and that's what teams are all about.
Okay, any other comments?
Just one last thing, you know, that I think we need to think about, you know, the historical preservation of the 1913 building, because if we don't preserve that building, then what historic buildings are we going to preserve in this town? And thanks and good night.
Well said, Sven.
I second that.
I don't know why.
Me too.
I thought we lost that 10 to 2.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're talking about preserving.
What's going on here?
Preserving.
We've got the big mo, the big mo.
Didn't we decide that? Yeah, it is, it's decided. Yeah. Otherwise, we need a plan.
Now, now that it's decided, we can be magnanimous, magnanimous.
Right.
I think the only thing we decided was that the town council was not going to hold up its commitment to a library over that question. It doesn't mean that we can't, and that, and that vote was 10 to 2. It doesn't mean that all 12 of us are not, all 12 of us are not incredibly sad to see the old library go. And most of the library board members are incredibly sad to see if, you know, the 1913 building not part of the plans. And I think most of, many of us, most of us still hope that maybe there was, there's a solution where we can have our cake and eat it too. What we decided was the town council was not, was not going to vote to hold up the $10 million. That's all we decided.
John, but there is another option, and that is to move the building or preserve it in some other way. And the library has stated that it will be, it will take $2 million to take down the existing library. We can take down the bigger part, but the 1913 building can be relocated, and part of that $2 million could be granted to move the building elsewhere.
And I was talking with our buddy Joe Palladino today, who's doing well, by the way, but, you know, the idea of moving a masonry construction building up a hill is not feasible.
Hey, guys, we already had this meeting, so let's, uh, let's not get too far into the weeds here.
Okay, thank you, everybody. The meeting is adjourned. Raise your hand if we're, if we're adjourned. Okay, we got a majority, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, good night.
Thank you, good night.
Bye, all.
Good night.